I call to order the regular session of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, July 16th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. Before we go to roll call, there's a couple of absences we have to deal with. One is Vice Mayor Kula is out of town. He's asked to be excused from this meeting. We have a motion in a second to do that.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Yes. The other one is Commissioner Kulianis is home ill, and I've asked to excuse him as well. And the may have a motion in a second to do so.
So move. Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Yes, okay. Irene, we have roll call for the meeting now.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Kula says absent and excused. Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulianis absent and excused. Commissioner DiDonato?
Here.
Okay. We have three, which is a quorum for tonight. Unfortunately, we have two out, as you see. I don't see our minister here, so I'm going to ask everybody to stand. I'll do the invocation, then we'll turn and do the pledge of allegiance. Almighty God, you have created all people and all of creation. We give you thanks for this gift. We've invited to engage with hope, joy, and love with your disciples. Open your hearts and our eyes to see our communities as you would have them us to see them. Help us to find courage to sit and hear others when so often we want to be heard first. You are good and you are gracious, oh God. Let us see all people as children of God. You created us all. It is in the name of God we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the body of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A bit of a rough start. Hopefully, things will smooth out. Do we have any public comments this evening on anything that's not on the agenda?
Hi, good evening. David Ballard Gettis Jr. I live on Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. Tonight, I would like to talk about the zone. Pinellas County has placed the residents in what is known as a ready-to-serv zone. I now live in a reclaimed water, ready-to-serv zone. So exactly what political ways and means brought this zone about? Originally, I lived in a non-deed restricted, unincorporated area of Pinellas County. What does it mean to live in a ready-to-serv zone? Who is serving? What is serving who? And what if you reject the dictates of paying the reclaimed water availability fee? Is the county intending on foreclosing on our homes for not paying their contrived availability charges? The reclaimed water contract is a variance application, which extends a variance not just for public utilities between the sidewalk and the street, but this variance of such includes my entire parcel of property allowing for development rights to a third-party private facility as granted. What is meant by this transfer of development rights is the county utility allowing an ad hoc third-party developer the right to privatize infrastructure on my property invoking a third-party levy against the equity of our homes to pay for such ad hoc infrastructure racketeering schemes, whereas the county fallaciously thumbs the residents, allowing for ad hoc bashoas the right to tap into the equity of our homes, plundering us as based on Federalist Paper 23, tapping into the equity of our homes to pay for this third-party facility contrived infrastructure as recognized in Pinellas County Ordinance 97-103, Section 126, 509A. In effect, the county is allowing a third party to assess a poll tax using a third-party direct tax system, directly taxing, bashing the residents. Based on Florida Statute 15303, the reclaimed water variance application is claiming eminent domain development rights against both our personal and our real property. All of our rights as residents are being taken in Statute 170.03. The reclaimed water variance application clearly states that I, the applicant, literally owe my health, my safety, and my religious convictions. Imagine that, taking our liberty, property, life, and religion while birthing water jurisdictions under the Fourteenth Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gettis. Are there any other public comments from anybody on anything that's not on the agenda? Please come forward, sir. Come to the podium and just state your name and address, and then please give us your thoughts.
My name is Evan Murray. I came down from North Carolina. I originally from Tarpon Springs. This is the first time I've been in this building since 1966. I played basketball on that court right there in the eighth grade. Okay, so that's.
Want to pull that microphone down closer to you?
Okay. I say it's my first time in this building since 1966. I played basketball on that court right there, the eighth grade team. My number was number 13. Okay, I'm coming because I own the property on Hibiscus Street over there. I've been getting new ones and letters from investors wanting to buy the property, and it's supposed to be about the zoning. I wanted to know if it's commercial or both residential or commercial, just in case if I want to put a business or something on the property, or maybe I might want to put a tiny home on there, something like that. I don't, you know, so that's what my concern is about the zoning.
Okay. I'm gonna, you don't have, you have something to write? Could you write this number down? 727?
Okay.
938? 3711? That's our switchboard number here at City Hall?
What is it, 93?
And ask for the zoning department.
Okay, so give me the number again, 9, I got 727.
And they should be able to answer you. I'm sorry.
938.
938.
3711.
3711. Okay, because I got a.
I think they're in their office. You want to get Pat's card, and he's going to go get a card, but then bring you a card so you can dial direct into their office.
A business card?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mark. Is there anyone else that's got a question that's not on the agenda? Mr. Jump, any remote access comments?
We do not have anyone in attendance at this time.
Okay. Let's go to the consent agenda. Any commissioner, actually Commissioner Eisner or Commissioner DiDonato wish to pull anything? Okay. Let me read the consent agenda. Item one is attorney's fees. 1A is person, Cohen, Mooney, Fernandez, and Jackson, invoice 5132, 5214. Item 1B is Dickman Law Firm, invoices 39092, 3093, 94, 95, 96, 97, 98. Item 1C is Unisalsman Jensen, invoices 82395, 96, 97, 98, 99, and 400. Item 2 is approved signing of addendum to the Newport Ritchie Combined Mutual Aid Agreement and intergovernmental interchange of public employees. Item 3 is approved signing of addendum to the Pasco County Sheriff's Office Mutual Aid Agreement. Item 4 is special event, 36th Annual Sponge Dock Seafood Festival. Item 5 is approved licensing agreement between the city and Eagle Creek Estates Property Owners Association. Item 6 is award file number 240109, Sidewalk Improvement Program utilizing the City of Temple Terrace bid 21009, continuing contract for miscellaneous concrete flat work. Item 7 is approved file number 240153, Security System Equipment Services utilizing Sourcewell Contract 030421. Item 8 is award file number 240125, Concrete Mixed Materials Batch Mix Delivered utilizing the Pinellas County Contract number 23-0285. Any public comments on any of these eight items? Nine items, not eight items? Commissioners, if you have any comments? Mr. Lecourse, the one thing I was going to ask about, did we work out the location of the seafood festival this year?
Yes, if you, in fact, we're going to get our dry run at the Hippie Fest. If you look down there, we're already preparing the grounds, and we'll have a good trial run with the Hippie Fest, and then we'll be ready for the bigger fest. And so that's some of the work you see going on in the parking lot, getting set up for where the restrooms will go, and that work is going on now by Mr. Function and the crew. So we're getting ready for our first event down there, which will start in April, I mean, in August.
I'm really happy to hear that. Congratulations, Merch Association. We'll see how it goes. And I guess that's one way of using that property down there.
That's the way we told the voters, yes.
It's the 1.8 acres that the city bought, I think, is it last year or?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyway, if there's no further comments, roll call, please. No, we have a motion in a second to approve.
Move to approve a consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Yes. Item 9 is discussion, the ballot language for referendum question on the November 5th, 2024 meeting. This is a, this is for the sale of the, for the purchase of what we refer to as the Stamis property, which is the spoil site where we construct our pond and have utilized that twice now for dredging, once in the late 90s and once we've just wrapped that up over the last seven years. So City Manager Lecourse, I'm going to ask you to, or is it you that?
I don't want to take credit for Irene's great writing of this thing, but why was on the agenda tonight? Obviously, you're coming back for a vote on that special meeting we're having on the 30th before the budget meeting at 5:30. You'll be coming back to officially vote on the ballot language, but that's too late a time if there's substantial changes that want to be made. That's too little time before we have to have the election office. So we want to put on this tonight with the language on there, hear if there's anything, any changes that we can get within the 75 words and go, so that when we come to vote, that we don't have any controversy on the 30th where we have no time to change before we have to submit it. So the language is there. Irene was a major part of constructing that language. We enclosed information on the last three ballot languages for property to show you, show you the form that we've used in the past, presented through. Obviously, there's a lot more facts that are in the ordinance that will be also coming. And of course, before the election, the fact sheet, meeting the requirements of the law. We'll explain a lot more about the properties and give the objective facts for the voters to make a decision on. So all that, there's a lot more in the process to go to, but again, we just wanted to do this tonight to make sure we were on track, and we didn't have any issues on the 30th when you vote for this, finally, to finalize it.
Okay, I just want to confirm, and Ms. Jacobs, this is consistent with everything that we've done in the past for purchasing property?
That's correct, and that'll be placed into the referendum, that'll call for the election and have the ballot language in it. That'll be coming back on the 30th.
And the one thing I know you mentioned to me was that the ballot is limited to 75 words. And we also have to be careful because it's translated into Spanish, Hispanic as well. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And that has to be within 75 words as well?
Because we're picking back in with elections office, they will be translating the ballot.
Okay.
It won't be up to the city.
But we just have to be concerned ourselves for 75 words?
That is correct.
Okay. And then City Manager mentioned a couple of the accompanying documents, the ordinance, which has more information, and then the fact sheet, which explains a little more, not just the spoil site, but prospective uses, other prospective uses for the, and I did, I put something together based on past discussions. It's just a working document. I handed it to City Manager just for the point of getting it started, and I think once he gets done with what he's doing, he's gonna, you're gonna route it to the commissioners as well? Yes. Okay, all right. Let me go to public comments, and then we'll come back to commissioners, public comments.
Bureau of Wax, 504 Ashland Avenue, with regard to the subject of the actual ballot language. It's very clear. From what I recall, you've come in under the word requirements for both the title and the referendum. I did see the previous ones, they kind of mirror that with just a few things changed out. So I applaud Irene and her staff for putting this together, and shouldn't really be any big changes that I can see you needing to do, but I would again reiterate the fact that you'll need to, as you mentioned, put out some kind of factual information sheet. I know you want it to go through, but you should still put pros and cons on there so people have an idea of both sides of what it would mean to either purchase it or not purchase it. That way, it'll be look more fair as compared to y'all just putting out your line to purchase it without, you know, maybe showing anything of what your concerns might be, as it's been mentioned about a couple of concerns predominantly the price. Thank you.
Yeah, I should also, so that fact sheet ought to have the financing approach as well. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so not only what it would be used for, but how it's going to be paid for as well. Let me, anybody else, any other commissioner, any other people in the public want to make a comment? Mr. Jump, anybody, remote access?
If anyone would like to talk on this item, please raise your hand to be allowed in. We do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay. Is that Mark Jump up there?
No.
Okay, all right. I don't know who it is talking up there in our booth, but I don't believe it's Mr. Jump, but just excuse me for referring to you as Mr. Jump, so makes it easy for me. Let me go to Commissioner Comments. Commissioner Eisner?
Well, I usually get to speak. I'm going to forego and let Frank speak if he has something he'd like to say.
I just want to bring out to the public that, because there is some conception out there, it appears that we've had this 5.5 million sitting around with nothing to do for it. I want to make it clear, we're working out a financial plan or have worked it out for that property, and we decided to give the rights to you to make that decision on the purchase, and it is something that the city has talked about for 30, maybe 40 years, a long time. And that's really all I want to add, but I want to make it clear that we don't have money that we're just sitting on for that project. It is, it will be worked out financially through budgeting, the budget process.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Eisner?
Well, I want to thank Commissioner DiDonato. It has been sitting for 30 years, and it should have been bought because it's been needed every 20 years for, for use, for the dredging of the anklet. And personally, I don't understand why we've rented it and not purchased it, but it's taking this board to move with sense and pushing, and now to have to pay, purchase it at an above price, but with conditions that we don't have many choices. So it's going to be what it's going to be. I just hope that the residents see the need as much as we do. I'm not happy with the price, but I'm going to accept it because the need is greater than the price. And I was glad that Commissioner Kulianis brought out a way of, you know, divvying this up over 10 years so that it doesn't, it's not a burden on the city and the purchase as well. So all in all, I'm in favor of it.
Yeah, the purchase price, actually, the value of the property was a lot less, I want to say, many years ago, at least seven years ago, when that whole item, idea was brought up to purchase it at that time. And even back in 1995, we used that site as well, and we leased it at that time. Of course, there was plenty of land on the north side of the river 25 years ago. Now, that's not the case. And then the other part of that, of course, is land value's gone up. So it's not that we're, that there's going to be a waste of money, that it's just going to be spent on something, that land will have value and it will increase in value. And obviously, there's some reason we see it that, and I'm hoping the City Manager will lay this out in the, in the fact sheet, that, you know, it was pointed out that the appraised value was $3.75 million. The owner wanted 5.25, and so it was pointed out, the value of the land is what the owner believes that it's of value to him, and not just the appraised value, which was 5.25. And, you know, we can also look at it ourselves, that the, obviously, for us to still want to buy it, the value of that land is even more to, more important to the city than 5.25 million dollars. So I'm hoping, not hoping, I know that the information that the city staff will put together will demonstrate that and also be able to finance the purchase of that property so it doesn't have a significant effect on other projects that are in the pipeline, programming and funding pipeline. So do you have any, Mr. Dickman, do you have anything? City Manager Lecourse, you want to finish this up or?
No, again, we'll bring it back for the final vote on the 30th.
Yeah, that's going to be in about a month?
No, two, two weeks.
So July?
That's our budget work session. We're doing, we're doing 5:30.
Okay.
July 30, we're doing a 5:30 meeting before the second budget hearing to do all the three elections, we'll have three items for the, all three election items we've done there. I know it seems like a short time to second because of the timing with the office. We want to do it then instead of the second to give the extra few days, since we had a work session anyway, it was easy to put it on there.
Mayor, could I?
Go ahead, Commissioner Eisner.
You know, I did want to also make one other comment because I do follow a lot of the comments that are being made on social media. This purchase is being done for the dredge and the dredge only. I've seen there's so many other reasons of why we're buying it. None of those reasons are true. If we do find a secondary use for it to be at a later date, that could be, but I just want everybody to know that the real main purpose for purchasing this is for the dredge and the dredge only. Because like I said, everything goes on to conspiracy theories out there, and, you know, I'm not building a second home.
There's always conspiracy theories out there, so.
I will not be building a second home.
Next week, you'll be reading something else tuned into what you just said, so.
Crazy stuff out there.
My point is, the residents are beginning, are going to be given the facts. The city attorney's putting the facts together. Our city attorney isn't going to let it loose unless it's factual, you know, and so the people can read it and make a decision of whether they feel it's something that the city needs to buy. The city, and correct me if I'm wrong, commissioned by law can't take a stand for or against a referendum. So all we can do is share the information that is available. Is that correct, Mr. Dickman?
Absolutely correct. You just have to be factual with the public.
Okay. So that's it. I don't, you don't have anything else? Okay, so let's go ahead and move on to, no votes needed. So we're going to move on to item 10, Rules and Procedures, Annual Review. Before we get started, I, you know, the City Manager asked me, since we've got two people out this evening, whether this was something that we might consider the three of us deferring for two weeks? And by, is it by our rules, we have to have the review this month. Is that correct?
It was supposed to be in April, but we were waiting on the city attorney, so.
All right. So what we'll do is, we scheduled it for tonight. Rather than taking it off before tonight, I wanted to hear from you, just make sure it's okay. So let's have a motion and a second to defer to the meeting of August 6th.
I have a question first.
Yes.
There are two members, as you stated, not here, and I, you know, they should have input. By approving it, we're just approving what's existing, but if anytime we wanted to discuss it, if those two commissioners would like items talked about, we could bring it up at another time. In other words, I don't want to push this through tonight without two more people here.
You're, I'm not, you're wanting to be able to talk about it tonight or just defer it?
For what? We're deferring this item until August 6th. Okay, all right, okay. I just want to make sure and clarify that what we're doing.
Yeah, no, no, no. To have, hopefully, all five of us here, all five of the commissioners, that's, and that way, because we're only needing to review it once annually, and it might be best to have all five of us here when we do that.
And just as Irene said, we were supposed to do it in April, but we didn't have a city attorney, so we deferred it to July. So why agenda's just taken off the meeting? We wanted to put it on the agenda in July like we deferred it to, and then defer it again when we have a full board. So that's probably some of the confusion. We just want to stay with, with the pattern of we, we've been going through to get it correct, so.
Thank you.
And I misspoke. It's in June of every year. I said April, but it's in June.
That's all right. We have a motion and a second to defer.
So move.
To.
Second.
August 6th, 2024. There's no further comments. Roll call, please.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. All right, item 11 is authorize city manager to execute Form DR-420, Form DR-420-TIF and Form DR-420-MM-P. City manager, of course.
Yes, for however many years it's been in the row, I present Ron Herring to give this item.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Florida statute 200.065 sets the procedures for the adoption of the millage rate. The DR-420 document establishes the maximum millage rate for fiscal year 2025. We're recommending to authorize a city manager to sign Form DR-420 at the maximum millage rate of 5.37. And if I'm here for any questions.
Okay, let's go to public comments. Are there any public comments? Basically, this form, we let the property appraiser, tax collector know that the, we're gonna hold our millage rate to 5.37, that's the maximum. So are there any, that's the existing millage rate that we're at right now? Correct. Is there any public comments concerning this item? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
We do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Are there any commission comments? I have a motion and a second to authorize a city manager to sign the forms.
No move. Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. Okay, item 12, which is the last item on the special consent, library board appointments. Ms. Jacobs, do you want to just briefly go over this?
Yes. Bear with me one second. So the term for Eileen Scott and Sheila Hayder both had it expired, and they were termed out. The library board did, liaison did get with the two alternates, and one is, would like to stay as an alternate. And alternate two, which was Katie Kelly, expressed that she would like to be moved into a regular position. With that said, you would either, A, you could either do, you would appoint, A, which would be moving the, moving Katie Taylor to a regular member and then, or selecting from the list below. And if you do A, moving the alternate up, you would also have to appoint an alternate two to fill her position. And then there also is number two, which is an appointment of another regular member. So you would have to do one or 1A.
Right.
And two.
Commissioners, do you have any?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Eisner.
Do you want this as a motion?
Just go ahead and make the motion, yeah.
I do, I'm gonna have a motion for Katie Kelly to be appointed to a regular position and Trish Gregory to a regular position and Pat Kimmel to a alternate.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Jacobs?
Yes.
You got all that? Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Public comments, I should go to public comments on that. Any public comments on that? Mr. Jump, any remote access comments?
We do not have any raised hands at this time.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes, yes. Okay, let's go to resolutions and ordinances.
I think we gotta break.
You want a break?
Well, I think we have to.
Oh my gosh. That hasn't happened a long time. Let me just explain, our rules of procedure, our rules of procedure require us to, require us to begin the resolutions and ordinances at 7:30. This is one of those rare meetings where we've gotten the consent, special consent agenda out of the way prior to that. So we've got, actually have to wait 29 minutes for that to hap, to, for it to be 7:30. And the, the reason why, you know, you could always ask for waiving the rules, but the reason why is everybody knows that it begins at 7:30, and if there's somebody that wants to make a comment that they know they don't have to be here before 7:30, then it would be a good thing to waive the, the rules of procedure and begin talking about those now. So what I'm gonna do is recess the meeting at 7:02, and then we'll reconvene at 7:30. And Peter, you can talk to whoever you wanted to about whatever you were gonna say.
Green light.
Start on the, we convene at 7:30 PM. We're going to start on our agenda, the resolutions and ordinances. We'll start with item 13, ordinance 2024-03. Mr. Dickman, if you could read the ordinance by title, please.
Yes, sir. An ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, repealing the city's comprehensive plan in its entirety and adopting the 2040 comprehensive plan, including all elements, the future land use map and map series, future land use categories and rules table and definitions, providing for supplemental reference documents not intended for adoption, including 2023 data and analysis, implementation work plan, sustainability, crosswalk and community engagement summary report, maintaining the repealed comprehensive plan as a legacy reference document, providing for other modifications that may arise from review of this ordinance at the public hearing, providing for corrections of Scrivener's errors, providing for transmittal to the state land planning agency and reviewing agencies in accordance with the requirements of the law, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Okay, thank you. City manager, of course.
Renee Vincent, if you and your staff would give this item?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Renee Vincent, Planning Director. A little background, we came to the board on May 7th, to the Board of Commissioners on May 7th, and asked for direction to move forward with, at that point you had an April version of the, of the comprehensive plan, kind of a culmination of a three-year planning process to update the comprehensive plan. We presented that and asked your permission to move forward with some additional public engagement, as well as starting the public adoption process. So since that meeting, we have conducted two additional steering committee workshops, two additional public, general public input sessions. We've, the Planning and Zoning Board hosted a workshop with our other advisory boards to allow them to present any comments or concerns directly to the Planning and Zoning Board. And then the Planning and Zoning Board did review, conducted a public hearing and recommended moving forward, or transmitted it to the board for review. I want to see if I can go through. I won't go through this in a lot of detail, since you've already seen it, but just for the benefit of the public, one of the things in our data analysis, you know, our populations is projected to increase about 2,600 persons by 2040, about additional 1,300 households. At a very high level, we, our findings indicate that the city has sufficient available land to accommodate population growth and economic expansion without any increases to density or intensity, and we have sufficient water and sewer capacity to accommodate our growth needs. The major changes to the plan include updating, updating all the maps and the, and the data. We have a place-based area map that really is kind of an intent map for the future to provide additional guidance beyond just the future land use map categories. We consolidated the future land use map categories to align with the countywide planning authority. We've removed outdated policies, anything that's been completed over the last 20 years, deleted a lot of repetitive policies. The plan has been reorganized to integrate with the strategic plan focus areas. And then we included updates based on community engagement and our advisory board participation. So the plan contents include the, the comprehensive plan itself, which is, the bulk of that is our, you know, basic population and employment projections and findings, the 13 elements with goals, objectives and policies, the map series, the future land use categories and rules and the definitions. Those first, those four things actually make up what will be adopted. The other data that's, that's part of the agenda packet, but it's not intended to be adopted, is the actual data and analysis, the implementation work plan, that sustainability crosswalk, and then the, the full engagement summary. That's just a listing of the comprehensive plan elements. So a list, a little bit over the, the history of this with the public engagement. We had a lot of online public engagement. I checked a little while ago, and through the life of the plan, we've had close to 6,000 online visits to our Connect Tarpon page. We've held over 14 workshops with advisory boards and community groups. We had 13 specific workshops with the Planning and Zoning Board. And then we had, you know, four additional discussion sessions with the steering committee, Planning and Zoning Board, as well as the Board of Commissioners, open house. We mailed over 5,400 postcards to affected property owners and those within 500 feet of affected properties. Really, that was to make sure that they understood that the name of their future land use map category might be changing as part of this consolidation. We responded to over 130 phone calls and emails as a result of that mailing, so I think it was pretty effective. At the Planning and Zoning Board, we did, we conducted a public hearing, and the board did recommend, recommend approval of ordinance 2024-03, with a series of edits that were based on the public participation that we had had, as well as what we heard at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting. You have a spreadsheet on the dais in front of you, and this is included in the agenda backup, which identifies the specific edits that have taken place since you saw that May 7th, at that May 7th workshop. Those are all in strike-through underline format. They really only affect the, the future land use element, some specific changes, the transportation element, the historic and cultural resources element, and the plan administration. in the agenda backup. So if you want to talk about specifically about some of those, we can. I'm happy to talk about them. There are also two additional edits that we staff are recommending be included. There were three additional definitions, and we realized that we had not carried over on the public, semi-public map category, which was previously institutional. We did not carry over the residential density associated with that at twelve and a half units per acre, so we're just bringing that, keeping that consistent with what it was before. So that's, you know, like I said, if you want to talk about specific changes, we can, but I tried to give you the table to kind of walk you through what those were. And as I said, you know, Planning and Zoning Board did approve all of those edits, with the exception of the, the two, the additional definitions and that residential density change. We do recommend approval of two thousand twenty-four oh three, repealing and replacing the comprehensive plan with those identified edits that are included in that summary explanation table, and as provided for in the strike-through-underline format and the associated documents. And then just to reiterate, the comprehensive plan twenty forty, the future land use map and map series, the categories and rules and the definitions will be adopted and included as exhibit A to the ordinance. So with that, I'll stop and answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Ms. Vincent, you, you brought some backup with you behind you, if you wanted to introduce them and have them come forward.
Oh, I do, yes. So, yeah, I just kudos to the, to the staff, because, you know, they, they did the heavy, the heavy lifting here. Pat McNeese is our planning supervisor, and our two principal planners, Ally Keen and Caroline Lanford. And without them, we would not be where we are, so.
Okay. Thank you for being here, the four of you. So let me go to public comments. Are there any public comments on adopting and rescinding the old plan and adopting the new plan?
If I may, you mentioned the edits, and on the backup, it's number four. Can we see the edit page? It's like twenty, there's two pages with like twenty items. That one, yeah. I don't know if you can expand it, but I will be speaking about the top one. Okay, a couple of things that I want to say. First off, I do have to commend all of the planning and zoning staff. This has been going on for a number of years, workshops, community meetings. So I want to point out the first item there on that list, which refers to east-west transportation, loops and distan. Ally and Pat were there a couple of years ago, when Commissioner Lunt was still a commissioner, he wasn't even the mayor, and we were at the A M E, and we had a whole session, and everybody came out, and the predominance was opening up distan. We got a grant from Ford Pinellas, I think, for a hundred thousand. I'm not sure where that is, but we got to stop lollygagging on this. You've had people coming up about opening this up. I'll say again, I know there's some people who are concerned, but you can control that traffic. You can control traffic right now on the Belcher side of this, the distan between the block and Klosterman by putting up some stop signs at Ivy Lane and that's, what is it, Sandy Hollow. We need to move forward on that, because that can be a corridor to connect to the San Pete College, which leads to the second point about loop transportation. You set, you've got the, the, the bus station right here by the police department. You can run right down distant to loop down there. You can have people go, you can go down Mir's Mango out to the beaches. We need to connect our resources better together. So I would implore the ward to get off their butts and start pushing forward for this, because it will be an economic catalyst for this area. Now, secondly, as far as in the book here, I want to go over a couple of things. You'll be seeing a land use amendment coming forward, and it got me to looking at what preservation is and recreation open space. So preservation intended for areas that are not categorized as appropriate to be categorized as natural resource, feature worthy of preservation, to recognize the significance of preserving such major environmental features and their functions. And then there's undeveloped berry items, spoil islands, flood plains, natural drainage ways, wildlife habitat, sea life, sea level rise adaptation. I would suggest in that category, you add with wildlife habitat and preservation, nature trails. And what I'm going to really bring forward to you, a little more controversial, is the recreation open space intended for areas appropriate to be used for open space and/or recreational purposes. And it goes, list of the different things you can have, public-private open space, public-private park, recreational facility, public beach, golf course and clubhouse, community gardens. What I would suggest, you need to take open space out of recreation. Recreation is a totally different animal than open space. You put open space with preservation, and then you open your preservation up to trails. And the reason why I want to kind of go into this is because where it talks about recreation facilities, which are allowed in recreation open space, says, equipment or facilities for exercise, improving physical fitness, outdoor swimming pools, skateboard parks, arenas, school of dance, gymnastics, martial arts, athletic courts, skating rinks, batting cages, or other similar activities. Where recreation open space includes park, public recreation. So the point, I guess, I'm trying to make is, there is a difference between recreation and open space. Open space belongs with preservation, and with preservation in open space, you need to open preservation up so people can get out into it. That property that it's out in Carlton that the county built, it's preservation. You can't go out and explore it or see the nature that's in it. So that's why my thing, as far as any changes to be made, you separate recreation open space. Recreation should be its own entity and should be combined with preservation. Thank you for your time and attention.
Mister Delakis, did you bring what you just described up to the P and Z board when they reviewed this?
Uh, no, because actually I've been, was got tied into this through looking at something going on with some land use amendments, and then I kind of got more into this. But I would have to say, the Planning and Zoning Board did a magnanimous job in the time that they took to review all of these things. So, yes, I apologize, maybe I didn't see it before, but now having a chance to bring this idea to you, it's just something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this? Mister Jump, any remote access comments?
We will unmute the first Zoom attendee. Zoom attendee, you are unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name is John Koulianos, ten twenty Peninsula Avenue. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, yes, go ahead, John.
Oh, wonderful. So this meeting is going by so smoothly. I, maybe I'll miss more meetings in the future, so you, you guys can just move along. So anyways, I just wanted to comment on how well this meeting is going.
The thought, the thought has crossed our minds, Commissioner Koulianos. So moved. Go ahead. Do I hear a second?
Anyways, I, I wanted to commend, this is a, a wonderful accomplishment, getting this, uh, comp plan updated like it has. And the planning department needs to be commended. Renee, you've done an excellent job. I'm sure Pat and the staff have, have done a lot of the lifting with you. The Planning and Zoning Board needs to be commended. Will Seaman and, and his crew, my, my old, my old stomping grounds, I'm obviously really proud of them. The residents, as Renee showed up on the screen, their participation in this has been amazing. You know, the Board of Commissioners needs to be commended. But also, a special commendation to you, Mayor. I know this was something you had spoken about well before becoming mayor, that updating these, the comp plan and integrating it with a, a really sound strategic plan that would lead the community into the future, is, you know, a legacy of yours and, and your board. And I was, I've been privileged to be a, a small part of that, so I want to commend you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Koulianis. Mister Jump, anyone else?
We will unmute the next Zoom attendee. Zoom attendee, you are unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record. Zoom attendee, you are still muted?
Star six.
Okay, we are going to unmute the next Zoom attendee.
Okay.
Zoom attendee, you are unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record.
Debbie McKinney, ten twenty-one Rose Tree Lane. I just want to say that I too am for opening up distan. It needs to be opened more than just one lane for an emergency. Um, I know sidewalks will get you to St. Pete College, but I just, we really need distan open, and there's so many people that want it open. Thank you.
So, anyone else?
We will unmute the next Zoom attendee. Zoom attendee, you are unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, George Leo Francis, fifteen Atherton Street. I am on the Planning and Zoning Board, and I am, but I am not speaking on their behalf today. I just wanted to thank Renee, Pat, Ally, and Caroline. They were extremely patient with the entire board, especially me, through the, all of the workshops, and I just really appreciate their patience. And Renee always gives credit to her staff, and I really appreciate that. The only, at the last meeting with the public came, I just, you know, a lot of, a lot of people showed up to that meeting, and there was some comments about how could they have gotten involved sooner, and that flyer really worked, and I know Mister Zambella's pointed it out. So I think if we could get people involved sooner in the planning process, that that would help, you know, so that, before it just comes right to you guys, which is where it is now. And the other thing, it may be the Steering Committee. We never met with the Steering Committee, and they put in their edits right at the very end. So again, those are pretty important, and they're on their separate spreadsheets. So I think that might be something that we could change for the future, but, you know, just really happy to be a part of the process. So I just want to say thank you to Renee and her team. Thank you.
Sir, anyone else, Mister Jump?
We do not have any more raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. Let me, first of all, pick up on what Commissioner Koulianis was saying. You know, it, when you, when you first come on board, you start pushing, because you don't understand why something happened, hasn't happened. We used, when I was city manager, we updated our comp plan. It was required by law every five years. And, but then the law changed in two thousand eleven and didn't require it, and they felt that the, the cities and whoever else had comp plans were mature enough to do this on your own. And so you kind of wonder why that doesn't happen and everything. And, and then you, you know, you reach a point now, and, and you're just thrilled with a product. And, and I think a large part of what the issue was of why it hasn't been done is because of this trying to stretch resources, normally monetary resources, and perhaps not seeing the importance of the planning department to the city's future. And I've learned a lot in the last five years concerning the importance of the planning department, and they, and they really are, in my opinion, the heart of the municipal government in terms of how people feel about their community and making sure that the ordinances are, are what the residents want, what the densities are that the residents want, and things like that. And the one thing that, in addition to just pushing for something to happen, I think that there was always this invitation to, and this goes for all of the departments. We did this. If, if you don't have enough manpower, tell us what you need, and we'll, you know, we'll provide it. And I think from the time Ms. Vincent first came back on board, which was twenty twenty, right? The April timeframe, May timeframe, twenty twenty. You had, I think, three people or something like that?
I had, I had one. I had Pat.
And now, and now you've got some outstanding people on your staff. And you see the result of that, is this comprehensive plan. And on top of that, we were supportive of Mrs. Vincent asking for consultants from the technical aspect, when that skill wasn't necessarily among that staff, or they had other things to do. So I hope that not just this commission, but I hope future commissions learn something from this, that if, if you want a quality project, product, you've got to pay for it, not just for consultants, but you also have to provide the staff and the department head the, the support that, that he or she needs in order to create this quality department that we have. So Ms. Vincent, in addition to the comp plan doing a terrific job, I want to also thank you for your planning department that you put together. And, and I know it's hard keeping everybody happy, but, but I, I know you do well at that, and, and we're going to have a second reading on this thing, but that's not going to happen until, I don't know when. I may not even be here when that happens.
Oh, you'll, you'll be here.
Anyway, I, I just, that's what I wanted to follow up. It's easy for somebody to say, look, we haven't done this, it's ridiculous, why are we doing this? We're, we're proving things based on outdated ordinance. But it's not that people don't want to do the right thing and have updated ordinance. They've got so many, so much other work to do. It, it's somewhere along the line. There's got to be a priority in, in the work effort as well. So again, I, I will continue to invite you to ask for any help that you need to make sure that things continue getting right. You know, all that stuff, the community outreach wasn't because people came in and sat down with Ms. Vincent. They actually went out and had public meetings and things like that. That's really hard to do when you still have to do all your daily work at the same time. So as far as the comp plan goes, it's a living document. This completely reduced the old one, which, and it's changed the focus from needs-based to asset-based, place-making, if you will, which is something I think that the city was ready to do. And, and I'm, I'm just absolutely thrilled with that. And so a lot of the ideas that come up for residents from here on out are still possible, and that'll be done in the normal course of work. But right now, this is just to get us started, this approval, the vote tonight is just to get this thing out of our hands and into the other agencies that need to review this and make sure that we've crossed our Ts and dotted our Is. So with that, let me go to the other commissioners. Commissioner Eisner, do you have anything?
I just, kudos to P and Z, your, your department. I, I've been through this process before on, on prior commissions, and it, it is extremely important, and I applaud you, Mayor, for your leadership in getting this, getting this forward, and, and the commissions that increased your staff to allow a lot of that to occur. It need, it needs to be done more than we probably get a chance to do, and I hope that we can set up the map, so to speak, or the procedures to, to do that very nature. And I, I just commend you, and I thank you for what you've done. I also think that, want to bring out that Commissioner, former Commissioner Delakis brought out an interesting point about the separation of those two. I think that should indeed be considered, so, thank you.
So, these are my comments. I was part of the plan, as a number of people have, and you know, it was a very interesting thing. I, I myself am not a planner. I kind of shoot from my hip. And it was a very enlightening type of event to see how this comes together. So I did get to watch that, and there's a lot of compliments to go around. I do want to thank the mayor for his ingenuity in bringing this up, having the input. I never understood why we would have a, and this is off the beaten path a little bit, but we would have a budget and then ask the residents afterwards to come in and give their comments after we would do the, have the budget locked and loaded. And it just didn't- have the budget locked and loaded and it just didn't make any sense. And it's very similar to, um, the comp plan and the strategic plan to not have really any input and just to have a commission deciding on their own what, which way the city should run. Um, and it also makes it very difficult for a city manager to manage a city when you have that kind of, um, it, it's more so out of control. And I feel that I see this plan that has come together with the hard work. I've worked with Ally, I've worked with you, yourself and Pat. And I just recently complimented Caroline in the, in, in the hallway one day because, um, I, I, I love when a plan can come together and I could see all the hard work that you all put into it. Um, I know you asked me if I had anything to input and I said, I, I never will go over and try to change someone who knows what they're doing. Um, there's little innuendos that can be tweaked as we go along. But, you know, for the most part, congratulations, I, I really take my hat off um, to the hard work that you've done along with the rest of the work. Um, the other comment that I did want to make just quickly is, um, because somebody brought up about the distant. Um, there was a, I think Forward Penellas did give us money to do that. And it was really more so just investigative. And I, from what I remember, and I may be wrong, I didn't see when I read that report that it was going to be so helpful as, as people think. Um, so, you know, during the day, it's a helpful thing. Come rush hour, and that's what everybody complains about, it's the rush hour traffic. And you have right now, um, two lanes, which is all nineteen and nineteen. You get a car accident on nineteen, everything pours onto all nineteen, it's just a given and it becomes a parking lot. And if we opened up Distin, we would have just a third parking lot because that would go into Live Oak and then it has to go, you have to go one way or the other. But, you know, it is what it is, everybody's got an opinion on it. I, I'd like to hear the people that are going to be affected by it, uh, by all the traffic, whether they want it, because they're the ones that are going to be put out. The people that benefit from it is always, they're always going to benefit. I want to know from the people who it's going to be a deficit for. So that's my comment with that.
Okay. Um, city manager, of course, uh, congratulations to you too, this was a good one.
Thank you.
And, um, and, um, I hope, uh, we can continue on, Ms. Vincent, in the future. I know we're not done yet. The ordinances have to be changed and updated. And I know that will occur largely when I am not here, so.
That work, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, the way the comp plan, this is the policy, goals and objectives, that's put in place, approved. Now you've got the land development code that, uh, basically takes those, um, um, goals and policies and objectives and can, and interprets those in the land development code and implements that. That's going to be happening for, I think, a couple of years, I would suspect.
Probably, yes.
Yeah, so, anyway, thank you. Is there anything else that you would like to offer?
I, I just, just thank you very much for, you know, for the, for the compliments, it's, it's very much appreciated.
Great work.
Plant, planting can be a tough gig sometimes, so, um, I, but I'm very pleased with, you know, where we are. So, and I, I thank you for the support.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Real quick, I, I neglected to say kudos to the, to the advisory board as well.
Yes.
They certainly should be commended because I know they put in a lot of work as well. And while I'm, while I'm saying that, I'm, I'm saying to anyone here that listens that has the interest, we are interested in, in you to serve on some of these boards. The job they do is tremendous and it helps our staff, it helps our city. So I, I want to take that commercial brief and, and ask, uh, to look in and, and, and volunteer. Thank you.
All right, there's no further comments. Uh, we're going to, um, make a motion to approve ordinance, if I can find it, uh, two thousand twenty-four dash zero three.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Badi Kiotis.
Yes, um, just for, this is the first reading, you won't see it in a two, two weeks or a month. It'll probably be, what, four or five months or so?
I'm hoping we can get it within three, you know.
Okay.
The, the DEOs kind of hands off these days, so it'll be the other reviewing agencies. But I'm, I'm hoping we can turn it around, you know, within three months.
Okay, thank you. And thank you all, planning staff. Um, the next item is, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four. Uh, Mr. Dixon, if you could read that by title?
Yes, sir. Uh, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, supporting the grant application for the Public Services Department to the Resilient Florida Program for the Wastewater Treatment Electrical Resiliency Project.
Okay, thank you. City manager, of course.
Yes, PJ is going to present, to present this.
Good evening, PJ Harbor, Grant Project Specialist. Um, this resolution serves as a statement of funding support for the city's grant application for the Resilient Florida through the Florida DEP. It's a requirement of the application, it's basically just saying that the city is going to support the project if they are funded. Um, what this project does, it consists of rebuilding and relocating the electrical systems for the advanced wastewater treatment plant to place it at a higher elevation to protect from storm surge and improve resiliency. Right now, the wastewater treatment plant has elements that are below the current one hundred year flood elevation and they're vulnerable to storm surge in the event of a hurricane. Um, the elements that are at the wastewater treatment plant date back to nineteen eighty-five. So if something fails in the event of a hurricane or catastrophic weather event, the parts aren't going to be able to be replaced. So this is what we're looking for, is to apply for a grant through Resilient Florida, through, um, FDEP to update everything, elevate it, get it higher. Um, right now, the budget that Mr. Keiger has set is anywhere between three point two and three point eight million. Um, it has been funded in the fiscal year twenty-six budget, it looks like, for three point two million. This grant would cover fifty percent of that project cost and the city would be responsible for the other fifty percent.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Alber. Uh, let me go to public comments, uh, very few people left in here. Mr. Trump, any remote access comments?
We do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, uh, city commission, uh.
I, I'm thankful and I think it's a great idea, we should, should support it, absolutely.
I, uh, also want to thank you for everything you're doing.
Oh, thank you.
Before you came, you seldom saw a whole lot. Now I'm being asked for my signature and, and sign the thing over again and then sign it again because when you submit the, um, package, they'll see some word that's not quite right and they want it changed, which means we need to sign it again. So thank you for everything.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, and, um, and also, um, I, I don't take, don't take this the wrong way. Beating the bushes to, to come up with some of these, uh, uh, grants that they're out there, but that's your, that's your job and, and you're doing an outstanding job, so thank you very much.
The squeaky wheel, right?
If there's no further comments, um, I need a motion to approve Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Badi Kiotis.
Yes. Um, item fifteen, Budget Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-five, city manager, of course. I'm going to read the.
I'm going to read the.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
No problem.
I'm smiling because we're going to see Ronnie again twice tonight, so, okay.
Yes, sir. Uh, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing the withdrawal of up to a hundred thousand dollars from the Sidewalk Improvement Fund and providing for an effective date hereof.
Thank you. Uh, public comments? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Herring, go ahead and explain everything.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Ron Herring, Finance Director. Uh, the city charter, section twenty-six directs use of the Sidewalk Improvement Fund. The city has approved of sidewalk projects in the amount of two hundred twenty-five thousand on tonight, it was on an earlier item. Uh, a sidewalk prod, this sidewalk project meets the requirements of section twenty-six. A resolution is required to use the sidewalk, uh, improvement fund. We are requesting approval for the withdrawal of a hundred thousand from the Sidewalk Improvement Fund. A hundred thousand is the maximum that can be withdrawn per fiscal year. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Okay. The, the, um, do you want to say anything else? Yeah, let me, let me just say, uh, nine, twenty nineteen, we had a charter revision commission which changed the, the way that the, um, the street and sidewalk fund was handled. We had to maintain a certain balance in there and any excess from that balance could be used, but that balance, uh, the principle could not be, uh, anything less than what was in the charter. And many people felt that, well, we're at the point where, um, we actually needed to make repairs and accelerate all that. And the only way that was going to happen was to go ahead and invade that principle. And, but there was the condition that the city had to spend, um, at least a hundred thousand dollars um, of it, of not its own money, but other money in order to get a hundred thousand dollars out of the, um, that special fund that we had. So this is a requirement that, uh, Mr. Herring is coming forward and saying, okay, our budget, uh, provides for that. We would like to go ahead and, and take per the charter, that amount of money out. Is that correct, Mr. Herring?
Correct, the charter requires that we, a resolution comes before the board to be able to use that, those funds.
Right. Uh, Commissioner Eisner, you've got anything?
It was my understanding and I, I don't, you know, we have more work to do than we're doing. And I, I hope that we agree to work towards a plan to, to resolve some of that that needs to be done. Like, for example, all, all pass the schools, we've got to have sidewalks. Uh, in other areas, we've identified them, but we've not necessarily funded them. This, this fund has allowed us over the, gee, I don't know how long that fund has actually been there, but it's, was there when I was there. So it's been there a long time and it, it, it has served a great purpose. But like you said, we were now in a process where we need to maybe put a little more towards that, that effort.
Um, city manager, you want to add anything?
Yeah, I just want to add, I was called out of a, a meeting yesterday because the charter was very involved in this and they probably heard me throwing things against the wall when I was listening to them about the sidewalk thing. But I went in there and gave them my view of what's going on and had, so this is a hot and heavy topic that was talked about a long time Monday, so I'm sure you're going to be seeing something coming up, um, coming out of them as they, they examine what was, evidence was given at the hearing and talk about and decide how to do it. Um, so that, you, we're going to be hearing more about this in the future and that's going to be coming to you probably from the charter people, um, because it was a hot and heavy topic on Monday.
In, in what way can you say anything more about that or is, or do you think that's their information?
Really, my assessment was, why aren't you doing more? And I, I went in there and told them that you put the handcuffs on it so we couldn't either, either take the, you know, increase the limo a little bit or.
You meaning the charter revision commission?
The charter, you know, I, that's why I was throwing things, it would sound like we weren't doing enough. Well, we, we, we can't, um, and, and the idea of either if we put a hundred, maybe two hundred allows that. I mean, you need the, you know, the restrictions of it, uh, you know, we need to talk about. If you want it done, that's what, you know, we're held back because of the restrictions that was put up. We're happy, we're happy to get the hundred thousand to supplement, but we can get more done if there was, uh, you know, another condition. So, so there's a lot of different talk from different people and ideas, so I'm sure they'll all be put together and after everybody thinks about it from the meeting, um, you know, come, come up with some ideas on, on that and, uh, you know, where we can fairly do, um, something to increase that. And then, of course, what they talked about, but I told them it was probably the next charter I have to do it. They're worried about the money going down and how we do that. And I said, well, that's probably an item for the next charter in five years. Because we're not going to go through it in five years and we can do a heck of sidewalks and not completely deplete it. But we do have to have a plan of how we're going to replenish it and how we're going to do that. So, you know, it's a long-going plan and stuff. But again, it, it was a subject for discussion that we're going to hear again up here.
Yeah, you, you get a lot less for a hundred thousand dollars today than you did five years ago.
Yes.
And so that's all part of it as well, it's not an issue. Well, I'm, you know, we're doing less because it's gotten a lot more expensive to do, um, for the same amount of money.
Bring this through the roof.
Yeah. Let, let me go, I didn't go to public comment, let me do that real quick, there's no one here except our fire chief. And, uh, our, our security, I don't want to mention any names.
Yes.
The, um, uh, Mr. Trump, any comments, remote access comments?
We will unmute the first Zoom attendee. Zoom attendee, you are unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record.
Juliana Day, four thirteenth, Oakwood Street, Tarpon Springs. My, uh, opinion on the sidewalk project is that there are a lot of sidewalks in my community, which I call the Union Academy, a community that are unfinished, unsafe. I need to know what's going to be done about that, um, as far as moving forward and repairing the sidewalks in the community for people who wants to even just walk in our community here as we continue to develop and build. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Day. The, um, uh, this, this is a finance, this is a, a city finance, uh, agenda item and, um, it's Mr. Funchen's department, Public Works Department. And I, I know you know Mr. Funchen with you being on the recreational, uh, advisory board. I, I would ask you to pose that question to him and city manager's here has noted that, so I'm sure he'll share that at the staff meeting with Mr. Funchen tomorrow, so.
And again, and as I told the board Monday and stuff, we, we are, with this allotment for these sidewalks, we are going to be constructing a whole new plan for the next five years. Again, with priorities on walkability to school, residential, um, so we're going to begin a whole nother process, um, to, to itemize, uh, especially if some more money becomes available, we need to be ready for that and, uh, and have a, have a plan and it's a plan we can do in-house and we've already been working on it. In Union Academy, we worked out on the Distin plan where we not talked about opening it up, but we identified places along the, the Distin, both sides, both sides of Distin that needed some sidewalks, some curb and some other repairs and we've already started those. So, so that process of evaluating those streets and, and moving for the next wave after this one's already begun and going to be continuing to, to update, have it ready. And again, prioritize especially neighborhoods, routes to schools, um, most used routes, um, that, that is beginning already. So this board will see that in, in the future as we develop that.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Trump, any other, uh, speakers?
We do not have any more raised hands at this time.
Okay, let me go to, uh, the commission, Commissioner Eisner, you got anything?
Um, I, I'm happy to do whatever the, uh, Charter Commission Committee wants to come up with. If they want to spend more money and, you know, move forward to get more streets.
Well, the residents have to approve whatever they come up with.
I understand. But I'm, I'm just saying if they want to propose that to the residents and the residents approve it, you know, so be it. I mean, we do have more, um, to be done than, than can be done with a hundred thousand dollars and concrete has gone up, so, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to support that myself, but, you know, that's about it. It's nothing you could do, you have a hundred thousand to spend and we spend that very quickly and easily and it's all you can do, so.
Okay, uh, Commissioner DiDonato?
Um, I just, uh, would send my good, my get well wishes to Commissioner Kulianis and my hope that the trip was very successful and happy for Commissioner Kulianis and my extreme gratitude to staff and the work that they do. Uh, I'm grateful, thank you.
Okay. Let me go to, um, um, back to, uh, what we need to do here. So this is item fifteen, Budget Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-five. Um, we have a motion to approve Budget Resolution two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-four.
So moved.
Sir, second. Uh, Commissioner DiDonato, we have a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five. Second, okay. Um, roll call, please.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Badi Kiotis.
Yes, um, okay, let's go to, uh, board and staff comments, um, assistant chief, assistant chief, anything?
No, sir.
Uh, Mr. Dickman, anything?
No, sir.
City manager, of course.
No, I don't.
I have none, thank you.
Okay. Our next commission meeting is in, is in about three weeks, right, July, August sixth? Our next commission meeting is in, is in about three weeks, right, July, August 6th?
Aside from the special session on the 30th, yeah.
Right, and then we have the other, you might want to mention some, well, let me mention it, the city manager, you know, on the 26th and 27th, right?
Okay, yes.
The next really important item is that the commission, it won't, it'll be the most, the next important thing for the city will be the city manager interviews, city manager candidate interviews, and that'll happen July 26th, 27th, and it's on Connect Tarpon Springs. Not yet, right?
Already, the meet and greet has gone out publicly today about the advertisement and stuff, for the meet and greet on Friday for the public. And I know you've got some information today, and some will come out tomorrow about the meeting time. I think the meeting time's been set for 4th on Saturday, where the actual meeting will be after the interviews. They've worked out the schedule, and so that meeting will be 4:30 on Saturday for the public to attend, and that session will be then, and more information, like I say, some came out today and some will be coming out tomorrow, but it'll all be out by tomorrow.
For the public, just mark your calendars right now for the 26th, 24th, 26th, 27th. Also, there'll be an article in the Suncoast News that's going to be coming out, I think, tomorrow, right, or maybe today?
Hopefully, hopefully it gets in for this one.
Today, okay. Ms. Jacobs, do you have anything?
I have.
Okay. Commissioner DiDonato?
I, inadvertently gave mine a raise.
Commissioner Eisner, you got anything?
Just quickly, I spoke with John, so I know he's getting well, he just needed some time out, so welcome back when he comes back on the 26th, 27th. And I just want to thank everybody for a quick meeting, I like quick meetings like this.
Thank you, I think it was a good meeting tonight, I want to thank all of you. I think the tropics are quiet right now, I hope that, Fire Chief Young is over here yelling at me, not yelling, but waving at, don't say that, but, but there's a reason for that, so we'll just hope that the dust keeps getting stirred up and, anyway, so I hope that's the case. And, and I'm looking forward to a nice continued hot, and now we've got some rain, which is good too, summer, and I hope we do get more rain. But in any case, I wish everybody well, and, and thank you, and meeting adjourned at 8:19.